701, so I'd like to call this virtual meeting to order. I'm gonna, I'm going to Brandon speak real quick to go over some ground rules of the of the virtual meeting. Mostly to probably mute your mics, but I'll let him his fuel and we'll go from there. Go ahead, Brandon.
Thank you, Tyler. As he mentioned, if you're not speaking, if you please mute your mics just to reduce any feedback and improve the overall audio quality. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and maybe played back at a later time via YouTube or another electronic means. When you speak, please identify yourself for anyone who's on the phone who may not be able to see who's speaking. And I don't believe there's any vote scheduled for tonight, but if there are any votes scheduled for tonight, it does need to be done as a roll call vote since this is a tele meeting. Other than that, I'll turn it back over to Tyler.
Thanks, Brandon. Yeah, and if anybody, you know, Board of Finance wise, if you have any questions or at any point, just raise your hand so I can acknowledge you. That way we're not talking, talking over each other. Think like we did a couple of weeks ago, I'll check in with everyone as we go out through this process. I do, I do wanna just reiterate that tonight's really like the second step in this budget process. Board of Ed approved and submitted their budget to the Board of Finance on March, in middle of March. Tonight is their opportunity to present their budget to us. And then we will have, you know, several other meetings where we will discuss and take action on the budgets. And then during those meetings, we will have public comments. And what we're also setting up for, be ready probably by tomorrow, is a dedicated email account for people to send their testimony that all members of the Board of Finance will access to the review. I know I've gotten several emails addressed to me and some addressed to all the Board of Finance members. I intend on forwarding all those emails that merge everyone to view. So if I do accidentally forget one, I would encourage everybody if they've already sent me testimony to send it to this updated email, but I will also get to the beginning of time to post how they'd like. The goal will be to have a virtual public hearing at the end of April, beginning of May. Again, have public comment again and make any final decisions on the budget at that point. One last thing before I give it over to Tracy and Lynn. I would ask the Board of Finance, you know, if you have questions, absolutely, but can we save them to the end? That way we're not trying to go back and forth. And the worst case scenario for having trouble understanding questions, certainly I think the Board of Ed and them would appreciate, Tracy would appreciate getting the questions in writing which we can submit and then get the written responses as well. On that way, we can make sure we're understanding each other in the virtual format. Right? With that said, I'm going to give it over. Oh, sorry. I have a Board of Finance comment. Anyone from the Board of Finance want to say anything before we get rolling? Just raise your hand if you're on the Board of Finance. Alright, I don't see any hands raised, so let's get rolling. Dr. Youngberg and Lynn, however you'd like to go.
Well, I just wanna thank you all for agreeing to do this meeting via Zoom.
I was just informed.
And I think it will be easier for us to see the present. It will be easier for us if we can all share the screen and see the presentation. And then this one final thing before I hand it over to Dr. Youngberg. I wanna encourage my fellow Board of Finance member Paula Haney to put her, her phone or computer on mute. You're the only one that's not muted. Thanks. I'll hand it over to you, Dr. Youngberg.
Alright, I'm gonna share the screen so we can get started. And for those of you who are looking at me and can see me from two angles, I have two monitors open right now because I can't see when I share the screen. I can see more of you on the second side. I'm trying to be able to do that, see more people in case you have things that you're trying to figure out. Okay, so for those of you who I haven't had a chance to meet, obviously Tracy Youngberg, I'm the Acting Superintendent for Wyndham Public Schools. I was hired in 2016 as the Assistant Superintendent and on November 4th took over as the Acting Superintendent. I can honestly say this is the first time I'm presenting a budget via Zoom, so you know, be patient with me. This is a very interesting format. Like I said earlier, Hollywood Squares kinda, kinda stuff. For tonight's presentation, we are, I'm trying to accomplish the following three objectives. Can everyone see the screen, by the way? The presentation? I see lots of bobbleheads. Good. And thumbs up. Okay, so our goal is to inform the Board of Finance and the public that are in on the call or the meeting of the financial needs of the Wyndham Public Schools. I want to open up that dialogue between the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance in support of our students. The, the word fiscal responsibility, you're gonna hear me talk about that a lot tonight. That's something that's really important to me. Because we really have to be fiscally responsible if we're gonna, if we're gonna actually help the district do the things that I know it can do. I also want to make sure that everyone who's on this meeting really understands that even under very difficult circumstances and a very difficult financial structure, the Wyndham Public Schools have been doing some pretty amazing things and I want to make sure that everyone, that we leave thinking about the things that we're doing under difficult circumstances. So I'm starting off with a quote from the Superintendent of Schools back in 1920, so almost 100 years ago. Mr. Egbert Case, A. Case was the Superintendent of Schools. He was the principal of the high school. He was also the Secretary of the Board. I guess they had a smaller district and less issues back then because he covered all those roles. But if you take a look at his quote, he's basically going to be saying some of the same things you're gonna hear me say tonight. And that is that a lot of the costs that the district is forced to pay are fixed costs and not things that can be negotiated. So I'll give you a second to read his quote and then we'll, we'll move on. So as you can see, when he talks about the fixed costs, it was a very different time back in 1920 than it is right now, but the same issues. He's in his book, which we found in the Kramer safe when we were emptying out the building. In his book, he's basically trying to explain to the town why they need to invest in education and why he's not asking for more money than what's necessary to run the schools. So I just wanna start off by saying that different time, but same issues that exist today. Next is just a quote from me, just reiterating the fact that if we are adequately funded as a school system and we're not worried about trying to pay bills, we can expend a lot more energy on the things that are, that we're supposed to be focused on, which is improving our learning environments, supporting student growth and achievement, and enhancing professional development. That is where we're supposed to be spending the majority of our energy right now, and that's not necessarily the case. So I'm hoping by presenting tonight's budget and talking to you about some of the things that we envisioned could be happening in the district, you'll get a sense of where we wanna put our, how we wanna back our priorities. Okay, this next, this next visual is a list of the requests that the Board of Ed has made in dollar amounts, starting back in 2014, 2015, and working our way up to 1920. It is what we've asked to receive and hopefully you can see the visual from where you are. And you'll notice that the amount of money the Board received in 1920, which didn't happen until the December 3rd referendum, was $47,976,055. You can see that number in my sleep now because we used it so often in our budget preparation materials. If you'll notice, that amount falls between what we asked for in 2016 and 2017 and 2017-18. So we actually received money, millions of dollars less than what we were asking for. And what we're asking for this year, which is that 52,000, 52 million, excuse me, $647,949 and change, is very close to what we would have asked, what we were asking for in 1920. Those figures are not too far off. We have been underfunded or not received what we requested for multiple years in a row. And the amount of money we're asking for that we're gonna be talking about tonight is, is really close to what we would have received if we had been fully funded all along. And we're gonna talk more about that Chromebook initiative that you can see listed as we would be funding up to half of that one-to-one Chromebook initiative. And for those of you who are trying to school your children at home right now, you know the importance of having access to devices. And we'll talk more about that as well, but I did wanna show you a visual to, to show that we're really close in what we're asking for this year, what we asked for last year. Because we only received $47,976,055, this next screen is all of the positions that have not been filled or refilled. We've spent a great deal of time, my leadership team and I, trying to reconcile the 2019-2020 budget. And this is a list of 29 positions and two stipends that have not been filled or refilled to try to make up that difference in the budget. I think that this was a pretty powerful slide on the Board of Ed side when we, when we presented the budget and the Board made their decision to move the budget forward, because it shows that the school system really has taken a hit. We have reduced staffing structure. We have made some pretty significant changes. And, and to be quite honest, we are doing without in some, in some places we really shouldn't be doing without. So I think this slide or this information and the testimonials that the, that the staff members and the community members shared at the last board meeting really motivated the Board of Ed, and I can let them speak for themselves because they're all on. But I think that's what motivated them to push the budget forward at the, at the dollar amount that they did. So our leadership team this year has really been working to try to make sense of the budget and to create or improve upon our accounting practices. We have the Munis platform, for those of you who are familiar with it. We're not currently using the budget generating portion of Munis, but we are using Munis to help guide our work. We, we have put a number of practices in place, accountability measures to make sure that we're tracking every single dollar in and every single dollar out. We have worked to make sure that the appropriations, that we're appropriating the right amount of money where it needs to be and that we're identifying every place that we're spending. We're, we're literally trying to make sense of every dollar that moves in and out of the district. Rita, you're on. There you are, Rita. Rita has developed even a monthly report to track our grant spending, which was not something that was done before. So we are providing the Board of Ed monthly reports on both the general fund side and grant funds. And trying to be very fiscally responsible about the way we're making every decision in the district. When I first took over, I started leadership staffing meetings with each of my principals and my cabinet members. We went through every single staff member in the district. We looked at every single position, person by person. We justified every person we were paying to make sure that there was no one on our payroll that didn't belong there. And I know someone would say, well, why would that happen? But it, it literally does. We uncovered a number of things that were not accurate and we fixed every single piece that we've uncovered so far. We established, using some state and national caseload recommendations, we've established an equitable staffing structure and use formula, use formulas to try to think about how we might be able to restructure our schools in a way that might not require as many staff members as we currently have. And that, that's a big adjustment for people in general, but for example, if you're a special education teacher and you have 11 kids on your caseload and we've decided that the, the state and national recommendation says you can have 15, there could be a cost savings in making those adjustments, assuming it's not taking away from meeting the needs of the students. But we've looked at every position and my cabinet members and my, my leadership team has done a wonderful job of trying to go through each of their staffing structures and determine how they can support a fiscally responsible budget. We have cut spending and reduced costs everywhere we can. We are looking at multiple ideas of how we might generate revenue and we'll talk a little bit more about that further along in the presentation. I'll give you an example about reducing costs. We had, we have a few instructional coaches left that haven't been reduced from the budget. And we use them this year to cover like maternity leaves or short-term medical leaves for other staff members because it meant we didn't have to hire a sub and we could have a master, a master teacher in front of our, our students. So we're trying to make decisions to reconcile the 1920 budget and put us in a better position for 2021. My big thing is we have a definite supervision issue that we're gonna work on in the district because we really do have to maximize employee performance. And with that comes the need not to potentially need as many people doing the job if they're doing the job well. So that's sort of where I'm coming from, from in terms of building the infrastructure internally. And our biggest thing was to really develop this sense of transparency and trust, and that's why the budget book looks the way it does. It was designed so that anyone could pick up the book and understand where, where the, the money is being spent and understand how the, the actual budget works. So I hope that the Board of Finance found it easy to read. And I hope anyone in the public picks it up and can at least ask questions about it and understand where, where the money is being spent, because that's really our, our intent was trust and transparency. This little visual is just to show you. Since the change in leadership, since I took over on November 4th, it says 92 school days. It's actually not 92 school days. It's 75 school days, four snow days and 13 days due to the COVID-19 virus, school closure days. But in those 92 days, we have done an enormous amount of work. We got the 0% budget passed on December 3rd. We made the big change to central office. And by the way, one of the things I mentioned was about trying to save money. Right now, Mr. Weathers and I are doing the job of three people. We did, we did not hire his position. He took my old position. I took Dr. Garcia's old position and the two of us are doing the job of three people. So there's a cost savings. It's virtually an impossible job, but we're doing the best we can. We've continued on trying to reconcile the 1920 budget pretty much every day. It's an ongoing process. We are working, continue to work on the ACA filings, tax years 2016 through 2019. We've made some progress there, but that definitely has taken a large amount of time from our, the one person we have doing benefits on the Board of Ed side. We obviously built the 2021 budget and we ran into the coronavirus there. And we continue to work on trust and transparency, both internally and externally. This next slide I put in just to remind, sort of reiterate that the taxpayers are responsible for a smaller portion of the school budget than I think is often presented. I, and I get it. I'm a taxpayer like all the rest of you, so you know that the education cost sharing comes out of somewhere. We're paying taxes on it somewhere. But the reality is that the pie chart in blue represents the amount of money that we take in, in grants. So we're doing a good job of using the federal and state grant monies to support education. The solid orange represents the education cost sharing. Obviously, that's for, I think everyone understands it, but just in case they don't, the town receives money because you're running a school system and that, that represents 37.2% of last year's budget. And the, the patched orange there represents the taxpayers' portion, that's the taxpayers' direct portion. But I just wanted to put that out there, that we are taking advantage of all of the federal and state grants that are available out there and we get a pretty hefty education cost share coming to Wyndham. Okay, this, this next section is, and if you have the budget book in front of you, it's on page 69 through 75. This is really where we tried to show how we were gonna make the budget sort of come to life in the book. We used a model from another district, but I have to tell you that our book came out way better than the model, so I'm really proud of my team about that. But this is, each of those colored numbers running down the left side of the executive summary page are sort of the big buckets, the big cost drivers that the district has. And I, I just, I wanna point out that if you just take a quick look, buckets one, two, and three are our biggest, they're our biggest expenditures. And that's because that's staffing, right? It's our certified salaries, our non-certified salaries, and our employee benefits. And I just, I wanna point out, and there's a slide coming up later, but as of February 10th, we had 883 employees, not full-time employees, but employees. And of the, of those 883 employees, 49% of them live in Wyndham. So yes, carrying a budget as large as 52 million and change has tax implications, but so does not carrying the budget because it potentially has economy, you know, town economy implications because half of our staff works in the, lives in the town. So I just wanted to point that out. I am hoping if I end up leading the district into 2021, that through attrition, some consolidation, some hefty PD and, and a real focus on supervision in tier one, that we can, we can do a better job with needing less resources. We're not there yet, but that's the goal. So the next few slides just go through each of the cost drivers and you can find them in your, in your book, starting on page 69 and walking your way through. The first two cost drivers are certified salaries and non-certified salaries. And what we did was we made sure that actual salaries were calculated into these buckets so we know exactly how much money we need to pay everyone, certified and non-certified. We also calculated any contractual obligations in 2021. So for example, if you look on page 70, the, the Wyndham Administrators Association has a negotiated contract raise of 1.87%. That is figured into what we are asking in the certified salaries. Every single bargaining unit's contractual obligation has been figured in. The same is true for non-certified and all of the, all of the bargaining units are listed on the page, so if you have any questions, you can see where the money's going. Buckets three and four represent employee benefits and contracted services. Again, not a lot of room, wiggle room in terms of us being able to change those numbers. Benefits are benefits. We, obviously you owe that to your employees. And contracted services, while we're always looking for a better deal, it's not always something we can negotiate. So, and I don't, I don't know if there's, if you're saving all your questions to the end, but if anyone has anything that you have a question about, please jump in. Buckets five and six, six represent pupil transportation and insurance. We took a big hit on the transportation contract this year, 7% increase with M&amp;J, which is one of the reasons why I said we probably should start thinking about or might wanna start thinking about owning our own buses because they have almost a monopoly in the area and I don't know how you fix that. So we're, we're still working on that. Insurance projections, obviously the insurance projections are given to us. They are a fixed, they're, they tell, the town's insurance consultant tells us what those projections are going to be. Bucket seven and eight represent communications and tuition. Again, not a lot of wiggle room on the communication side. I made jokes that we, we were gonna eliminate the cell phones for the staff members, but the reality is you can't really do that. You need to be able to be in touch with our administrators and our, and our department leaders. And it's really not a good idea to use your own personal cellphone for, for business. So even though that doesn't save us a lot of money, it was one of the jokes. I said we're all gonna go to walkie-talkies and see how that worked for a while. Tuition, bucket number eight is an area that we can save money on because tuition represents both the special education out placements, which we often don't have a choice on, but it represents the students who choose to go to another school, the school choice option. And this is a place where we absolutely positively can save money if we change the reputation of Wyndham Public Schools. I can tell you, and I don't know if this particular administrator is on the call, but one of my principals said she was shopping in one of the local stores and overheard a conversation between two moms who were basically saying they couldn't send their kids to Wyndham High School and they were agreeing with each other. They couldn't send their kids to Wyndham High School and the reason why was because Wyndham doesn't have a budget. They never have a budget. And they said, we're better off going to E.O. Smith because E.O. Smith, our kids are guaranteed to get what they need in terms of their education. So that is sort of the reputation that's out there that Wyndham doesn't fund education and students might be better off going somewhere else, but what a lot of people don't realize is we have to pay for those students to go somewhere else. So that really does hurt us a great deal in paying tuition to students that choose to go elsewhere and it's a place we absolutely positively can focus energy and bring students back. It's gonna take us some time and adequately funding education. Buckets nine and 10 represent other purchase services and supplies. Other purchase services, again, we made a couple of adjustments in how we were spending or who we were getting substitutes for, and that saved us a little bit of money. And we, the instructional supplies above and beyond what our schools have, we tried to use an equitable supply line, listing out a hundred dollars per student and a hun, at K to 8 and 125 dollars for students nine through 12, above and beyond what the schools are already outfitted to have. Buckets 11 and 12 represent the operations and maintenance of our buildings and textbooks and library books. If we were to do something and you'll see in a slide coming up, if we were to do something like consolidate our elementary schools, which is definitely a discussion because none of our elementary schools are actually filled to capacity right now. If we were to make a decision like that, we could potentially offset a lot of, or not a lot of, but some, some of the costs in bucket 11 because we could potentially take off the, the maintenance costs of one of our, one of our buildings and reduce utility costs in one of those buildings. So that, that is definitely could be a savings for us. Bucket 12, textbooks, library books and other supplies. We are looking to make some purchases either through capital funds, the expansion of our reading program, the American Reading Company is, should be supported by the capital funds. And then we're also using grant monies to take care of the math curriculum that has to be purchased this year. So we are trying to look elsewhere, any, any opportunity we have. Buckets 13 and 14 represent equipment and miscellaneous costs and equipment, it comes back to that one-to-one device. This budget offers about $430,000, which is about half of what we need to actually get the one-to-one Chromebook initiative up and running. One-to-one, a one-to-one device would mean that every kid in our district, 3,300 and change, would have access to a device that they could potentially take back and forth with them between school and home. And they would be learning all of the valuable technology skills that we know that colleges and careers are going to require of them. And they wouldn't have to worry about whether or not they were gonna have access to those things in the classroom because every single student would be outfitted. And again, this particular budget funds about half of that initiative moving forward. And miscellaneous costs, they should remain relatively flat. One of the, one of the adjustments was related to some employee settlements, but it should remain flat moving forward. So sort of in summary, the $52,647,949, it allows us to sustain our workforce, not reduce any other positions at this point and gives us the opportunity to restructure and reduce. And, and by reduction, I would mean if we were to move forward and consolidate our elementary schools, but it would give us a year to do that. Once we get back to school, whenever that's going to happen. It would also give us the ability to meet all of our contractual obligations, as we mentioned, for tuition, transportation, salaries and benefits. It provides for the instructional supplies, as I mentioned. It definitely allows for more accurate allocations for maintenance of facilities. We, we, anytime we could make, we look back for three years to try to determine what we spent in each line item and made an average guess. We did the best we could on projections and use data or some kind of formula behind every decision we made. So we really feel like that this budget represents an accurate projection of what we're gonna spend in 2021. Again, the half of the Chromebook initiative. And just to point out, a lot of people think that the early childhood program is actually completely funded by grants and it's not. So we know this year, we had to use approximately $200,000 of board funds to cover the benefits of the people working in our early childhood program and we just wanna make sure that people understand that. We've tried to negotiate with East Con to find out if there's ways for us to be given more money to run that program and there really isn't. So we may end up reducing that program at some point, but right now I just wanted the Board of Finance to know that that is not completely grant funded, if that was your understanding. And the budget also allows us to do things like continue our dual language program. And the budget also allows us to do things like continue our dual-language program, and brain research now has pretty much proven that there are definite benefits to speaking more than one language. You can tell by the happy kids in these pictures, there's a lot more than just brain research can back that up. But this is an example of a, of a particular program that we could eventually get to a place where it's tuition generating. This is sort of a nationally-known program, it does amazing things, and there's no reason why we couldn't set it up to draw kids from other districts to come in and take advantage of our dual-language program. Again, just a reiteration of the equitable access to technology. Here's another really great example of an opportunity for us to potentially generate tuition and continue to move our students forward. The Echo Program, it's currently serving 78 students at Wyndham High School. This is the program that, that prepares them for jobs in advanced manufacturing. They come out of high school making really competitive wages, and here's another opportunity where we could potentially open up this program and, and use it to draw kids in from other, from other places. I know that we've been doing some, having some discussions with Representative Johnson about if there's any, if there's going to be any legislation that would put us in a position where we could be a magnet for manufacturing. So it's sort of just in the infancy, but it's definitely something I want you all to know about, that we're thinking about how we can use the things that we're really good at to be more fiscally, or to be more fiscally responsible, or to be more, you know, have that mindset that we can use this to our advantage on the, on the dollar side. It's obviously an advantage to our students. They're able to come out of high school, prepared to take on high-paying jobs in the manufacturing field, so it's a really amazing opportunity for them. This budget also continues to fund our, all of the work that we've put in to support our families. Family engagement is one of the key levers in school success for our students. We have a number of things that are in place to engage our families and make sure that we're supporting them, so we would be able to continue all that work we've already started. And by the way, the family liaisons have been instrumental in our ability to feed people in, through this COVID-19 nightmares, what I'm using as the descriptor. So these next few slides are just giving you a visual of how Wyndham's classrooms are different than the classrooms across the state of Connecticut. I think it's in a good way, but it does create places where we have to be mindful, and we may need to spend more money to give them what they need. So for example, the top set of little pictures there, little people, in an average Connecticut classroom, there's approximately two English language learners for every 20 students. In Wyndham's classrooms, there's approximately six for every 20. So that's, I think that's an asset, and I want to look at it as an asset, but the reality is, it might require us to spend more money on curriculum in more than one language. So I just want to put it out there that this is our makeup. These are the kids who are in our schools, and we need to make sure we're getting them what they need. Special education is also true, we have, is also slightly different. We have more students identified as special, with special needs than other classrooms across the state. Same with students of Hispanic and Latino descent, again, an asset for us, but we just want to be mindful that we need to give them what they need. Going to just give you a minute to just take a, read this quote about future jobs. So that last line of the quote, the most sought-after jobs in 2015, 2050, excuse me, probably don't even exist yet, so I just want you to think about that, because they don't exist yet. There's things we can't even imagine. Just go back 30 years ago and think about the way life was 30 years ago. I know, I know what it was like for me when I was 20. Their cell phones didn't even exist yet. So I, I was, let's say, a sophomore in college, to make a phone call home, you had to get the quarters, and go to the payphone in the hallway, and actually, you know, put in all your quarters to talk to someone. The world was very different 30 years ago, and it's going to be very different 30 years from now. And just to remind you all, the students coming into kindergarten this coming September, assuming we get back to school, they will be 35 years old in 2050. So those new jobs that haven't been invented yet, they'll be holding them. So I want us to be thinking, have that forward lens. It's really important that we think outside the box, and not just about next year, but about down the road, and what we can do to support them. This next slide, I just want to ask, or remind the Board of Finance members to take a look at the budget book when you have a chance. I want you to look at all the specialized programs that exist on pages 65 through 67. Wyndham does an amazing job of developing these specialized programs. We really do get at the heart of what our kids need, and there's actually opportunities there for tuition, potentially tuition-generating opportunities as well. We have amazing programs that support students with autism, students with behavioral needs. There's amazing things happening in the district, and one of the things I want to try to do for us, or do collectively, is to move some of those specialized programs into more of a Tier One lens. So the things that the specialized programs offer, everyone should have a piece of that, because you'd eventually not need as many specialized programs if more students were able to respond to what was being offered to them in Tier One. So the Board of Finance could take an opportunity after this presentation, and just take a look at some of the things that we're already doing in support of our kids, I would appreciate that. Also, on the right-hand side of your screen is, the flower shape is Wyndham High School's portrait of a grad, of a graduate. It's all of the skills that we are saying, by the time students pass through the Wyndham Public Schools and graduate from Wyndham High School, they will have obtained all of these skills. So in order for us to make the promise that those things are going to happen, we need to be adequately funded. So, and this particular graphic, or the skills that are embodied in the graphic, are the same skills that are going to guide all of the, the high school redesign that has already started, and the pathways that the high school students will be taking part in, which fits into the whole renovate-as-new project that's already underway. The next couple of slides, I'm going to dig a little bit into the district accomplishments. Not going to go too far in-depth on them, but I do want to point out to you that pages eight and nine in the budget book lay out a whole number of things that the district has accomplished over the last several years. We are actually doing a really good job of getting things accomplished under really difficult circumstances. For example, for the last four years, we've had a school of distinction. Our elementary schools have been named schools of distinction. Wyndham Center was named twice over the last four years, Sweeney and Natchog. And for those of you who don't know what a school of distinction is, it means that our schools scored in the top 10% of the entire state of Connecticut in whatever category they've been named in. It's not an easy thing to do. In the last four years, we've had a school of distinction, so they're, they're getting the job done. We also have seen some amazing increases in the percent, in the number of students who are reaching benchmark on the SAT. Out of the Alliance districts, we had the second-highest growth, the second-highest increase in the number of kids reaching benchmark out of the 33 districts that make up the Alliance district. Again, not an easy feat. We continue to offer opportunities for our students in high school to take college credit, and this is a really, a really important piece of data. Three out of four of our 11th and 12th grader students took at least two college credit courses in 2018, 19. So that's not only saving money for their families and themselves, but it's also offering rigorous course opportunities for our kids while they're here. And we continue to function, or to focus on, excuse me, the whole idea of improving our student attendance. 100 more students attended school regularly last year than the year before. Again, they have to be in the seats for us to make the achievement pieces happen. Sort of in short, and I want you, I do want you to take the time for the Board of Finance to go back and look at the accomplishments on pages eight and nine, and the graphs that demonstrate some of our growth, our achievement growth. I'd like for you to take the time to read through that, if you haven't already done that. But in short, we are really running as fast as we can, and making things happen under really difficult circumstances. So I know, if we're adequately funded, you're going to see even more amazing things happen. I'm certain of it. Because when we are adequately funded, we will be able to move from this reactive phase into a proactive phase, and that's sort of our goal from, from a staffing standpoint. Here's just a reminder for those of you who are interested in what's happening in our high school. Again, and our goal is to bring as many kids back to this high school as possible, so we're not paying outside tuition. But we have three career pathways: business engineering and technology, health sciences, human services, law and public safety. And these particular pathways were chosen based on student survey data and on some analysis of the job market. So we know it's, we're still a comprehensive high school, everyone still gets, you know, their diploma from a comprehensive high school, but they will have opportunities to take part in internships and mentoring opportunities. So we're basically going to set them up to be more college and career-ready than they would have been if they didn't get into one of these pathways, and they might actually be even more engaged, because it's something that they are interested in learning about. Here's a, sort of the pieces of how I hope we can save some money and generate revenue, and help ourselves. Again, consider closing one of our elementary schools, it's something that's definitely we need to address, it's going to take a little time to do it properly. But again, none of our elementary schools are currently at capacity, and we do know we can make a shift and potentially close one of our buildings. We are always looking to revisit benefit packages and contract language for both our, you know, for our bargaining units, and to figure out if there's ways we can save money while still supporting the staff, because obviously, they're on the front lines, and we want to take care of them as well. We have some ideas about potentially developing a revenue-generating alternative school. We had an alternative school for one year that was very successful. We should have kept that in place, and we didn't, and I, I would like to see us get back to a place where we have an alternative school that meets our needs, and then could potentially meet the needs of students coming from other places. Again, the dual-language reminder that we have an amazing program already in place, and there's no reason why it couldn't become a tuition-generating opportunity for us. And I talked briefly with Jim Rivers a few months back about potentially purchasing buses, buses for the town. That's a huge undertaking, but it's another place where you can start to say, are there things that we can do to save money over time? That whole fiscal responsibility, while we're still keeping the students at the center of everything we do. My big focus for the district is to maximize employee performance and focus on Tier One, as I mentioned, improve our supervision model, which would in turn mean that we don't need as many people doing the jobs that they're doing. We obviously have to engage, the Board of Ed already knows that we have to have some of these long-range solutions in place, so we're going to need to have a series of meetings. I don't know when that's going to happen with the current situation, but I know this was our plan when we started doing the budget a few months back. We obviously always want to do a cost-benefit analysis to make sure that any things that we're taking out actually make sense. Sometimes we make decisions and they're short-sighted, and we can't do that anymore, because the district suffers for it. And we obviously want to make sure we ensure that every stakeholder is involved in the And that's sort of the presentation. What I had hoped to get, there are the three objectives I hope to get at. Just as a reminder, just letting you know, just a quick little, that little tidbit about Wyndham Public Schools, and the fact that we have more than 3,300 students, 883 employees, and 49% of them live in town. And our focus is always to make sure that we never lose sight of providing our students what they need, all of our students. Questions, feedback?
Thank you, Tracy. I got some feedback that I was a little choppy, so I apologize if that happened earlier.
You still are a little bit.
Now, my, can I?
To me, it sounds robotic. You sound a little bit like a robot.
I've been fine all week working for me this. All right.
Tyler?
I'm going to move to an old location in my house for a quick second.
Okay. Tyler, could I say something while you're moving?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to stop my video, my intercations, absolutely.
Okay, I just want to, I want to thank Dr. Youngberg for giving that presentation, and I want to thank the Board of Finance for, for sitting through it, and I hope you learned some things that you may not have known about what we've been doing. This is the Chair of the Board of Ed, and I want to say that we have worked very hard in the past year. We've made a lot of tough decisions, and we have really worked hard on the financial accountability, transparency, and sort of being better at figuring out our path forward. I think that the, the current board has, and some of the previous board members who stepped off or didn't get elected last year, all have worked very hard with Dr. Youngberg and her team, and I think that has been evidenced in a number of unanimous decisions that the board has made across party lines in the past several months. And I want to thank Mark Doyle for stepping up to serve as the Chair of our Finance and Audit Committee of the Board. I think he has worked very hard with Dr. Youngberg and Rita Parsiac to really get a handle on where we are. And it was, it was a pretty, it was a decision to present this budget to you, understanding that, having been on the Board of Finance myself, it's, it seems like a huge lift. And I hope that you understand that we are trying our best to right this ship and recalibrate in a wise and deliberate way moving forward, and we hope that you'll, you will show your faith in us and the hard work that we've done, and support this budget. And we promise you that moving forward, we are going to work very hard with Dr. Youngberg and the rest of the team, and the community at large, who wants to be involved in taking a look at how we can save money and, you know, spend less money, not save money, really, spend less money, and still meet the needs of the district moving forward. But we cannot just snap our fingers and do that overnight. We must go through a process to do that, and I think that in the, in the several months that Dr. Youngberg has been the acting superintendent, we've made great strides. And I'll stop talking and let you guys ask questions.
Thanks, Lynn. I took off video, I don't know if that's helping with my choppiness or not.
Sounds better.
Oh, okay, so I'm still here. I won't be on video for the sake of quality, for, for everyone to hear me. So I, I said this earlier, and I might have chopped up, but I'm hoping to have the Board of Finance ask some general questions, but if we are having difficulty hearing them, such maybe with me, that we can submit questions in writing, and then get responses back, so that we can get a full, true understanding. But I'll open it up to questions now to the Board of Finance. Let me see if I can pull up the gallery, so I can see if any Board of Finance members have any questions. I see Doug first. Doug, can you hear me? Do you have any questions? You want to unmute, Doug?
Okay, unmuted now.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, I, I was curious, I work in a school, I, I was curious how the current pandemic is impacting Wyndham, and what it sees for change or impact that has for the upcoming year.
In terms of what?
Services, you mentioned Chromebooks, for instance. I'm using those a lot at this tough moment, and I assume you want to. Is there a plan in this budget, or is that going to come to us later, for your hopes there?
So, so in this budget, the 2021 budget, half of the Chromebook initiative would be funded. About $430,000 is identified. But you're right, that sending them home now to do the schooling at home could potentially put us in a position where we need, we don't have as many that get returned to us in the right condition, so.
I, I understand that one.
Yeah, absolutely. So it definitely could have an impact, you're right.
Okay, I was just wondering if that's already in here, that potential impact of hard use?
It is the hard, well, the, I know that Brendan, you're on, right, Brendan's budget includes sort of upkeep in general, maintenance.
Correct. So there, there is money in there for maintenance, and if we do move forward with a take-home model in the future, there is. in the future, there is a provision in our board policies for a usage fee to cover the increase in maintenance that's required for them going home. Obviously, we waived that in the current pandemic conditions, but if we did move to a regular take home program, there would be additional revenue coming in to cover the extra maintenance.
Thank you, Brendan. To either of you, do our students have sufficient access to Wi-Fi to make good use of additional Chromebooks at this time at all their home?
Unfortunately, we're still trying to get the final tally, but we, we do know there's a large percentage of our students that do not have Wi-Fi access in their homes. So Chromebooks going home with them are not going to help them. They could still help them in the classroom, but not going home.
I see. Gotcha. Okay, thank you. That's what I was curious about.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Doug. Next in my gallery is Cindy. Cindy, do you have any questions? No, not at this time. All right, next I have Chuck. Chuck, do you have any questions?
Yes. I have a list of questions, but probably rather than take them up tonight, I'll submit them to you. But one of the things that I was wondering, you have the educational cost sharing decreasing. Is there a basis for that or?
What do you mean decreasing? That's the amount from 1920 in the book.
I'm looking at your projection of 17596. I'm sorry, of 24205. On page 15.
Rita, can you answer that question? I remember we asked the question specifically. It's page 15, Rita. And remember, I remember being on the phone call with Kathy Dempsey from the state and she explained why there might be a slight variation, but I don't remember.
Okay.
Yeah, either. I think we're going to have to get back to you because I don't have my notes on that.
Okay.
But there was a, there was a specific reason, yes.
Yeah, she gave us the reason. We'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Also, I am concerned about the, which one is it here? Number 13, equipment. Number one, I have no bearing or no truth behind this, but I understand there was some Chromebooks donated. That's one part. The second part is why are we putting this in the budget? Why not a capital expenditure? Because this hurts the MBR.
Okay. Duly noted. There are, there's the opportunity for the Alliance districts to take part or to request that they get some of the 60,000 laptops you heard about. No one has received them yet. And just to sort of let everyone know, I think by Friday, we're supposed to submit the application that could potentially get us some. There's 60,000 laptops available to the 33 Alliance districts. And like Hartford, for example, I think has 40,000 kids all by themselves. So I just want to put that in perspective. I don't know how many we'll actually get, but we are putting in, we are going to submit an application to ask for some because it certainly can't hurt us, right? So you would, you would prefer to see the one-to-one Chromebooks put into a capital account, capital funds?
Yes, because it's such a large sum and this will be in the MBR for years to come. And it could hurt future budgets because it's so high.
Tracy and Tyler, can I chime in here?
Absolutely.
So Chuck, part of the reason for that is, you know, when you put something into a capital expense, it usually ends up being bonded out over 20 years. But the lifespan of a Chromebook is only four to five years. So with the money that's actually proposed in this budget, there is some catch up from the zero funding this last year in this budget that maybe more, might be more appropriate for a capital expense. But really what we're looking to put into it is a quarter of, you know, repurchasing, purchasing a quarter of the equipment every year. So there's a four-year refresh cycle on the equipment. So, you know, we went forward with two years buying a quarter of the equipment we needed each year to, to start the program. This last year, we bought no equipment, which has kind of put us behind the eight ball. But the idea is, you know, it should be an ongoing recurring operating expense just evened out over the course of the lifetime of the equipment.
You're breaking up. Your last sentence broke up.
Sorry. You know, it's, it's, it is an operating expense because it doesn't, the lifespan of it doesn't lend itself really to capital with only being a four-year expense. So in the operating expense, we put a quarter of what fully funding the program is each year. So it spreads out over those four years, but it is an ongoing expense.
Yeah, but it's still a large sum of money.
It is.
And it makes your request for your budget, total budget way higher than I think the taxpayers would like. That's, that's something you ought to think of. Is there an alternate way that you can have purchased these Chromebooks, but not included in our, in the budget? It's thinking about the box, but this is a big number.
Right.
Yeah, I saw your hand. I wanted, I know you're, I know you do Chromebooks a lot in your profession, so I don't know if you, if you had a thought and that's why you raised your hand? Mute?
Yes, indeed. Chuck wasn't there in the year we discussed this. There was previous year Board of Finance discussion that suggested that the Chromebook lives were so short, they should be considered operating rather than capital. And so I understand Chuck's point, but in fairness, it was the Board of Finance that requested that these be expenses rather than capitalized. Thank you.
So you were sort of breaking up, but you said that the Board of Finance had originally requested that it be in the general budget and not as a capital expense?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Tracy.
Appreciate it.
Look, I think something that happened to me is happening to you now. Chuck, anything else? Hold on, you got, we got on mute, Chuck. Hold on.
Um, not at the moment. I'll write up these rest of my questions and submit them so that I can answer them the next time we meet.
Great. I appreciate that.
Me too.
Let's see, next on my grid, Josh, questions? Now I see you shaking your head and no, okay. Kevin?
Dr. Youngberg, thank you very much for this presentation. It's your, your 92 days, huh?
92 days.
And you're guided to, interesting, that you're living interesting times.
Sure. Trial by fire.
Trial by fire. First, a kind of simple question. You talk about sustain our workforce, then restructure, reduce. Tell me what you mean by restructure and how would you go about doing that?
So, well, the reduce would come if we were to actually consolidate our elementary schools because we'd naturally reduce staffing needs if you put more students in each school and close a school. Restructuring would be based on some of the things I talked about earlier in terms of national and state recommendations for caseloads. We are slowly making those changes now. As many as we can. But little by little, we'd be, we'd be reducing and restructuring based on numbers. So I could give you more specific examples if you wanted, but special ed, anything around special ed comes to mind initially. The number of cases, the way the caseloads are structured, the instructional delivery model that's being used to deliver the services. Is it the most efficient model to support as many kids as possible? I mean, there's a whole number of things that can happen. But we'd be looking to meet the needs of our students with, with fewer adults providing those services wherever we could because obviously kids have to come first in every decision we make.
Okay, I guess my question would be, is the word then, why not restructure now? Why wait?
Well, 92 days, first of all, and we have actually started the process. All of my, all of my departments were asked to sort of look at the way they're currently doing business, knowing that our goal is to reduce costs and save money. We are, that is where we're going. And in the, in the first budget that I put together for the board, we had to make adjustments because the first proposal was to come in with nothing higher than a 6% increase and that would require more than 20 positions being eliminated from our budget. So in telling the staff, look, this is, if this is where we're going to live budget-wise, we're going to have to do things differently without these 20 or so people. So we are starting, absolutely.
Perfect. Okay, and the second question I have, which actually you kind of alluded to. This is, you're 92nd day, but this is my fifth budget presentation for the Board of Ed. So, and the first one, and everyone since then, I asked, what about consolidating elementary schools? And from the first one, five years ago, they said, well, that's a complicated deal. It's going to take us a lot of thought. It'll take us a couple of years to do that. And then the next year, it was the same thing. So where are we now?
So I brought up the, the fact that it could be done. Again, 92 days. I think that we could do it for, for 21, 22. I think it would be a huge stretch to try to do it for this coming school year, particularly under the circumstances we're currently in right now makes it virtually impossible because we're not even here. But I think in a year, we could have a plan and have it well communicated and make sure we've gotten all the stakeholders involved in the process and understand all the things that are going to come up as a result of it. That's where we are. It's also something that requires, I believe, board approval. So we don't have that yet either. It's just that, it's one of the things on the plate because I know that none of our elementary schools are currently filled to capacity.
It's been five years and they've said the same thing each year. I just want to point that out. It's a little, 92 days for you, but six years for me. So a little frustrating.
I understand. I, I, I don't, you know, I can't speak for what was, what happened before. I can just tell you of how I would lead moving forward.
All right, I think that Kevin, you seem to be all set. Roger, I don't want to forget you on the phone. Do you have any questions right now?
No, I'll think about my questions and I'll present it to you later.
Perfect, all right. So based on that, I, my, my one question, well, I have one comment and one question. I don't know if you know this, Dr. Youngberg, who represented this book, but if you're trying to tug at my heartstrings, you had my daughter and a couple of these photos front and center. So I don't know if you did that on purpose or not.
I don't think we did, but I did hear about that later.
My other question too, and it, and it kind of goes back to a couple of years ago when we've always asked and we've always suggested and, and just, I don't know if this happened, but have there been any talks about consolid, or having discussions with your, your public work staff, working with the town public work staff on the side of, to kind of consolidate their dual roles and really into one role because we do have staff on both sides that are well qualified to do work. These are town buildings. But I just want to know if that discussion ever came up or were discussed.
So it was actually brought up. We didn't get very far because after the last budget meeting shortly thereafter is when all of this nightmare started. So we haven't gotten any further, but I'm pretty much open to anything that's going to put us in a position where we have a sustainable budget, that the kids, that it's student centered. So if that's something that makes sense and we actually do a cost benefit analysis and can prove that it saves us money, I'm all for pretty much anything that's going to stop us from having to worry about paying the bills and allow us to focus on teaching and learning.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. And of course, with everything considering that's a term of COVID, you know, I totally understand that. So what it sounds like, I went around all the Board of Finance members that sounds like we're going to have some questions in writing that we'll submit to you and Lynn to get answers before our next budget meeting that we'll have to get, to get some clarifications. And of course, we'll always invite you guys to be there if more questions are generated. But any, anything I should like to say before we hit the last part of my agenda of this evening? Doug, by the way, I, I'm not on video, but I saw everything and I could hear clearly. So great job on the presentation. But anything else you'd like to say, any closing remarks?
Just that I appreciate the Board of Finance sitting through a presentation that's, that was sort of strange this way. Talking to a screen is kind of strange, so I appreciate your time. And same with all the people that aren't on the Board of Ed or the Board of Finance. Just, I appreciate you in general and I just, I want, I want you to know that I come from a place that really is student centered. You can ask any of the people who are currently working on my team. I know we're going to do some pretty amazing things, but we're going to need some time to do it and we're going to need to be adequately funded. So just to be thinking that I can't make up for what happened before, but I can tell you that there's a new sheriff in town. So things are going to be different. They already are. You can ask any of my team members. Yeah, I see them clapping. So I, that's all I can say is you, you got to trust me and I know that's kind of hard because you don't know me, but that's, that's where we're, that's where I am right now.
Thanks, Tracy. I just want to say again, because I was chopping in the beginning, that today was really step two of the budget process, this presentation. We are going to be scheduling other meetings to discuss and take action and also public comment. We're currently working on a centralized email that all the Board of Finance members can have access to for written testimony. So anything that's been sent to me or, or to any of the other members, I will encourage them to forward to this general email. It should be ready by tomorrow. But I'll get the information out to the town and to the Board of Ed and to you, Tracy, to share so that we can receive a written testimony before, to get taken to the public. And also in the future, we will be inviting the public to speak at these meetings as well through this lovely virtual process and through the phone. So thank you for the presentation. With that, I do have Board of Finance comment again on my agenda. Raise a hand. I can see almost anybody. Does anybody else in the Board of Finance have any other comments? No, Roger, do you have any comments?
I have no comment.
All right. With that, I will, again, I'll remind everyone that the next time we meet, we will have public comment. But I will, at this point, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'm moved.
So moved by Chuck.
I'll second that. Roger made it.
By Roger, all those in favor, somebody saying aye, raise your hand. Kevin, yes. Chuck, yes. Doug, yes. Josh, yes. Roger, yes. All right, well, thank you very much. Brandon, thank you. I appreciate all the effort you put in to get this meeting going. I'm going to close the meeting. Let me see what time it is. 8:09. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.